Hope we have a quorum present. Sorry, we're beginning the, this meeting today, a few minutes late, June 11th. May we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Crawford, Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
Here. We will have a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. I'd like us, in the moment of silence, if we could focus our thoughts on our mayor, Kaye Crawford. She lost her husband this weekend, Leroy Lee Crawford, passed away just about a day on Saturday. He was, Kaye and her small family were there with him. I believe Dr. Davis was there and, and I appreciate caregivers that can be present at moments like that, so I'm sure Kaye appreciated his, his presence. As we have our moment of silence, I hope you'll think of her and condolences to her and hope for her, hope to give her strength now and in the days ahead. So, if you're able, if you'll please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I don't believe we have any words and proclamations today, so I'll open the floor for the citizens forum. Is there anybody that would like to address the commissioner of the staff today? If being done, we'll move to public hearing, an item scheduled for a certain time.
Vice Mayor Ryan, real quick, if we could, I didn't want to jump ahead of any of the citizens, but have a couple of quick introductions for you.
Oh, great, thank you.
I think Steve, yeah, he's still back there. Steve Rivers and Chris Cotton, if you guys would like to come up real quick, we'll, we'll put you on the spot a little bit. Chris Cotton is our new Parks and Rec director, started today, and we were going to introduce him earlier, but we used up our time. Steve Rivers is our new community relations supervisor. He also started today, and so we're happy to have them both here, and we always, when we, when we hire new staff, we always try to hire the very best that we can, so we tell these folks, you're at the top of the, of the chain, of the food chain there, and we're excited to have you here and hope that you want to finish out your career here, so, I want to just introduce them for you.
Great, well, welcome, gentlemen, and look forward to working with you.
Thanks, guys.
Anything you want to tell us?
Happy to be here, happy to serve.
I know Steve's been around a while, but there's any experiences from where you've come from that you want to share with us?
I had some experiences in Joplin that I don't have, hope I don't have to redo here, so. It's a nice town, it's a nice community. My wife, my family are all from Kansas, so we're excited to be closer to her family. I'm originally from Tulsa, Oklahoma, so I'm a lot closer to my family as well, so just happy to be here and getting to know the town, getting to know the staff, and just so far, enjoying it.
Great. Public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time. I don't believe that we have anything of that nature, so Ms. Wicks, if we could have the consent agenda?
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of June 27, 2016. Item 6.2, accept the offered sidewalk easements for Quell Meadows Estates addition, block 5, lot 20, and block 6, lot 11. Item 6.3, authorize the repair of high service pump number 203 at the water treatment plant, project number 63098, De Brodeck Well and Pump Incorporated of Kansas City, Kansas, in the amount of $24,186.85.
Are there any items on the consent agenda that any of the commissioners would like to remove? And is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 5-0. Item 7, administration. Item 7.1, please.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 16-10842, amending Salina Code Section 42-302 pertaining to permitted uses in the C4 District and repealing the existing section.
This is the second reading. I believe the first reading was June 27th. We've had no public comment, as I understand it. Is there anything further for us from the staff or from the public? Then I entertain a motion on the second reading.
I move that we approve on second reading, ordinance number 16-10842.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? And we'll have a roll call vote for that.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
Aye. That passes 4 to 0. Item 7.2, second reading of ordinance 1610841.
Item 7.2, second reading, ordinance number 16-10841, authorizing the issuance by the City of Salina, Kansas, of a not-to-exceed 11.5 million aggregate principal amount of taxable industrial revenue bonds, Series 2016, to provide funds to acquire, construct, and equip a project for the Salina Fieldhouse Qualified Active Low-Income Community Business, Inc., and authorizing and approving certain documents and actions in connection with the issuance of said bonds.
This is the second reading. The first reading, I believe, was June 20th, did I see that? And I don't believe we've had any public comment on that. Is there anything further from the staff or the public? Then we'll bring it up here for a discussion or a motion.
All right, I move adoption on second reading of ordinance number 16-10841.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? We'll have a roll call vote on this item as well.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
Aye. That passes 4 to 0. Item 7.3.
Item 7.3, authorized sale of general obligation internal improvement bonds, Series 2016A, general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2016B, and temporary notes, Series 2016-2. 7.3A, receive report on bids received. 7.3B, second reading ordinance number 16-10838, authorizing the issuance and delivery of general obligation internal improvement bonds, Series 2016A. 7.3C, second reading ordinance number 1610839, authorizing the issuance and delivery of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2016B. 7.3D, resolution number 167380, prescribing the form and details of and authorizing the delivery of general obligation internal improvement bonds, Series 2016A. 7.3E, resolution number 16-7381, prescribing the form and details of and authorizing the delivery of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2016B. And 7.3F, resolution number 16-7382, authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of general obligation temporary notes, Series 2016-2.
Welcome, Ms. Meyer. That's quite a bit there. Do you want to make your report about all of it?
No, she read it great.
And then we'll field the questions on it?
Yes, that sounds good. We actually had the bond sale today. Commissioners have taken action on this before to do, the first reading of some ordinances. The sale was today at noon. The interest rates on both of those came in lower than what was anticipated. On Series 2016A, the new money bonds, the total principal amount ends up being 6.57 million, which was lower than anticipated. The interest rate out of, there were three bids total, the interest rate is 2.29 for the true interest cost. The refunding money, we are, that was about, it was supposed to be a little over 14 million, it ended up being 13.75 because of the premium that was received. The interest rate is 1.7 on that over 15 years. We were counting on saving about 900,000 by refunding six series of outstanding bonds. It's going to actually end up being about 1.6 million, so about $110,000 a year over the next 15 years, thanks to the low interest rate. Interest rates remain lower than anticipated, which is great.
Very nice.
Let's see, I think you know all the rest of this already. The temporary notes, the action that's being taken today, they were private placed last week. You took action on that to do a private placement with the bank. This is just the resolution to authorize and direct the sale of those temporary notes, but no actual action was taken today with the sale because of the private placement with those notes. Any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Meyer? Any further comments from the staff? No? Thank you very much for the report. Item 7.3B is the second reading of this ordinance number 1610838, authorizing the issuance and delivery of general obligation internal improvement bond, bond, Series 2016-A. I believe that reading was on September, June 27th, and I presume we've had no further comment on it. Any comments from the staff or the public? And we'll bring it back for a motion.
Move adoption on second reading ordinance number 16-10838, authorizing the issuance and delivery of general obligation internal improvement bond, Series 216-A.
Second.
Any further discussion on that one? And we'll have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
Aye. 7.3, the second reading of ordinance number 1610839, authorizing the issuance and delivery of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2016B. Also, June 27th, first reading, and no public comments. Anything else to come to the record? Is there a motion on that item?
Yeah, a motion to approve on second reading ordinance number 16-10839, authorizing the issuance and delivery of $13,750,000 principal amount of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2016-B.
Second.
Any discussion? All those, or the roll, roll call for that.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
Aye. 7.3D, resolution number 167380. Is there further input on this item? Gentlemen, any discussion on this resolution? Then I think we're ready for a motion.
I move that we approve resolution number 16-7380, prescribing the form and details of and authorizing the delivery of 6.57 million dollars principal amount of general obligation internal improvement bonds, Series 12016-A.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 4-0. 7.3E, resolution 167381. Any further comment or any comment from the public on this item? If being none, we'll bring it back to the commission. Any discussion or motion?
I move approve, I move passage of resolution number 16-7381, prescribing the form and details of and authorizing delivery of $13,750,000 principal amount of general obligation refund, refunding bonds, Series 2016B.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item carries 4-0. 7.3F, resolution 167382. Any further remarks or comments from the public? And I think we're ready also for a motion on that item.
Move passage of resolution number 16-7382, authorizing directing the sale and delivery of $4,615,000 principal amount of general obligation temporary notes, Series 2016-2.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, just a quick question on the, I was looking forward in the, in the resolution, couldn't find it in there, but I know in the blue sheet originally it said that the, that the term on this was, on these temporary notes was three, was three years, and that the anticipation, the anticipated payoff would be through anticipated star bond revenues? Is that, is that, is that why the timing would be three years? Is it kind of based on that, or what, what happens if it's a different type of, if we finance it a different way?
Yeah, you, you could actually issue either general obligation bonds or wait for star bonds. In this particular case, the three years makes sure that we get for sure through the project time, and we have the opportunity to look at that option. And so that way, with the project completion, we'd have the final cost, so we know what the exact bond issuance amount would be, and again, could choose. So, yeah, the, if, as we look at the downtown project, there is a possibility and thought that depending on when star bonds are issued, that would work, but it's all a timing question, so we could also issue general obligation bonds as intended. Either way, we could cover that.
Okay, because we, without having the star bonds approved or anything like that, we, I, I know that we had originally talked about other revenue sources for, for paying that off, so it's, so we do have a backup.
Yeah, yeah, this is actually really set up as a GO bond issuance, but if, if star bonds are in place by that time, we could use those if we, if we should choose and feel it's most beneficial for the community.
Okay.
And if it's helpful, I think the reference to three years was a three-year issuance and typically be callable in two, but with the private placement, we had more flexibility to call them early if we so chose.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Any other remarks? All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes 4-0. That was happy work, and we're up to 7.4, resolution number 167379. I'll just keep going, Ms. Wicks. Authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Saline County, with Saline County addressing prisoner housing, emergency dispatch, and related services. Ms. Meyer?
The county administrator and some officers from the sheriff's department are also here as well, if there are further questions that I can answer. This item relates to an agreement that the city has had for a long time with Saline County to reimburse the cost of prisoner housing. Back in 2004, that agreement was amended to add provisions for emergency dispatch services, and then fingerprinting and photography services were added in 2011. It's a three-year term. The current one is expiring at the end of this year. We're taking action on it now so that both entities can effectively plan their 2017 budgets This year, we are proposing to add evidence, custody, and control into the agreement as Under the fiscal part, you'll see that the current monthly payment is about $37,500, and it is proposed to go up to about $39,300 for 2017, and that, that's the net of all of the different amounts. The county will build a city on a monthly basis for that. The total increase is about 4.7% overall. The largest increase on the county cost side has been for prisoner housing. The largest cost on the city side is for dispatch services, but they net out to about 4.7. Does anybody have any questions that I could answer, or perhaps turn it over to them? Nothing I can answer.
Yeah, on these, on the costs, are this, do these also take into account, I know there's an additional cost if we have to send prisoners outside of the...
It's all included in their rate, so if they take one of our prisoners and send them out, we don't pay an additional amount for that.
Right. Is there, over, I mean, because it's a, it's a bit of an increase, a couple million dollars or a couple and a half increase over, over the year, is that, is that a cost? And maybe someone from the county can address that. Is there, is, is that cost getting more because we're overcrowding and we're sending more, we're having to transport more out of, out of our...
The county is, yes. They're not necessarily city prisoners. This, the county's costs are going up because of those rising costs.
And are we sharing that, but we're sharing that cost with them as well?
Yes.
Right, okay. Okay, well, I, I don't really know if there's a question as much as there's a, boy, that just seems to be a real, i- is that what explains a lot of the increase in the cost, I guess, is the question that I'm asking?
On their side, yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
How, how do you solve that?
That's...
I just have a question.
Probably a question for law enforcement and prosecutors, not for finance.
Just a general question, I hadn't thought about it just this moment. If a prisoner needs to be hospitalized, does, is their own personal health insurance billed? Or is that, the reason I'm asking on the, in the agreement, the first page, I guess, Roman numeral 2, let's see, it's a routine medical care should not include care provided outside the facility such as at a hospital. Who, who pays for the hospitalization cost?
The, if they're in the care and custody of the Saline County Jail, I believe that cost goes to the Saline County Jail.
So is this written? So would, would a hospitalization for an emergency be considered routine medical care, or does that come under another category? I'm just curious.
On the medical portion, if they're an inmate of the jail, sheriff's office is responsible for the payment of hospital visits, doctors' fees, whatever. If we're housing them for the city, on the monthly charge that we send you, we send you that bill for the, just for the municipal court. So if we are housing them strictly for municipal court, that goes on an extra fee.
Okay. If they need medical attention during that time?
That is correct. But, you know, we may send somebody over and it's a, a $10,000 bill, but we send it through Medicaid and get it down for both the county and the municipal entities.
All right. Is your, is your charge based on a day, a set daily fee that you've established?
Yes, we take our average daily population, and then we times that times 365, that gives us a number, and then we take our total operating budget just for the jail, and we divide that, and then that gives us about $48.50 per inmate per day, is what it costs us to do that. It's expensive.
It is.
It is.
It's lower than some other counties.
Yes.
That I've looked at.
What percent of the prison, then, is taken up with city prisoners?
That's a hard question. We have a computer program that is not completely functioning at this time, so we have inmates that are strictly county, and we have inmates that are strictly municipal, and then we have inmates that are combined district and municipal court. So what we do, if somebody comes in on a district fine or district charge, the municipal court doesn't have to pay, but once they've served in their district court time, then it reverts back to municipal court, so then you have to start adding up these numbers. So we'd have to go back through about 70-some thousand bookends and open up each particular one to find out how long they were here, for what charges, and then you have to tally all those up, so it's, it's a complex matter, it's a time, very time-consuming matter to do that. So what we've done is, when we initially had that first contract, that's what we used our base for, and our numbers have just kept going up for inmates.
Is there any desire to increase the, the number of prisoners that are dealt with in different ways besides incarceration?
There are several programs right now, groups that are out looking how to avoid sending somebody to jail. You know, if you have somebody arrested for a DUI, they get booked in. Most of the time, somebody on a, a simple charge like that can bond out relatively quickly, and you're more, the higher crime you go up, robbery, rape, whatever, of course you're going to be in there longer, the bond goes up, so it's harder to, to bond out. A lot of people come in, get booked into jail, and within three or four hours, they're back out, they bond out. So, there's programs out there, they're talking about reducing the bond on some crimes. We have a work release program where we try to get people a job so that when they get out, they have money to provide for their family, pay the bills, pay the fines. We don't want them in our jail because when we have inmates in our jail, that causes kind of a hardship for our corrections people because we're overwhelmed. It's just, the more numbers, the more amount of programs that we have, is, we don't want the jail to be crowded, but unfortunately, it is.
Commissioner, too, and when you look at the whole law, the system, the law enforcement system that's out there, one thing to remember, too, is that the authority on having a prisoner be put in jail is not with Saline County Sheriff's Office or the jail, it's actually with the judge, and so I think you raise an interesting point, which is, are there a lot of people in the community involved in trying to discuss a means to, to have alternative methods for especially non-violent-type crimes, things where you feel comfortable releasing people? And I think that is occurring, that conversation is occurring at some, at some degree, and it has been occurring over the last two or three years. But ultimately, once those folks are delivered by the judicial system to the hands of the jail, it's, they have to take them and keep them in accordance with the terms that they're given, so they really don't have much choice.
As an example, today, as of 8:00 this morning, we had 246 inmates in our care at the Saline County Jail. 189 of them were males, 57 of them were females. We have in-house, meaning actually on our property, 170 inmates, and we have housed out right now 72. And the people that we house out, we try to house out inmates that are sentenced so that we don't have to drive up to Mitchell County, so we don't have to drive up to Ottawa, back and forth for court dates. However, every day, it's running to Kansas City, running to Junction City, running to Wichita, running to Mitchell County, running to Cloud County, transporting inmates, but the ones that we house out, we try to get so they're sentenced so we can reduce the number of trips, which reduces our budget expenses.
Do you keep track of the number of repeat offenders are in that population?
I don't necessarily say we keep track of them. Like, like you said, we, we take inmates that are brought to us, and we have to book them into jail, and if they're housed, we try to find the most appropriate place to house them, whether it be in our facility or out of county. But as far as repeat offenders, there are quite a few of them, and I think community corrections would probably be able to speak on numbers on that better than I would.
Does this include juvenile?
No.
Court, okay.
No, sir.
Totally separate, okay.
Other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address this item? Being none, we'll bring it back up here for consideration. Is there more discussion, or is there a motion?
I move that we approve resolution number 167379, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Saline County addressing prisoner housing, emergency dispatch, and related services.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 7-4 passes 4 to 0. 7-5, first reading ordinance number 161083, removing certain real property from downtown development district and making certain findings pursuant KSA, KSA 12-1770. Is Mr. Stack, who gives the, oh, Mr. Shrag, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. I was gonna, I was interested to hear what Dan had to say.
As I'm sure you recall, approximately a year ago, we passed the tax increment financing project boundaries, as well as the star bond, creating those districts, and in that interim time, Salina 2020 and city staff have been working on developing the plans and refining those, and those will be before you for consideration on August 22nd. And also, as the, as Salina 2020 worked on that, and as, as development has occurred in that intervening time, there's been a couple... there's been a couple of realizations. One, the Lee, uh, buildings and the redevelopment of the Lee buildings was something that was identified and anticipated initially. And Slayna twenty twenty's had conversations with prospective developers and, and realized that they probably want to be able to make use of tax increment financing for that particular project for their redevelopment, uh, costs, rather than applying the tax increment financing benefits to the downtown development more broadly. And so Slayna twenty twenty approached us about, um, removing, or at least, uh, removing the Lee buildings from the tax increment financing district. Then additionally, uh, when the KU School of Medicine purchase was made and they purchased the Bank of America building, there was a realization that that would not be subject to property taxes and would come off the tax rolls. Similarly, the, the Field House site, it was commercially appraised and, and would come off the tax rolls. Well, from a tax increment financing standpoint, um, we have to establish a base appraised value and that is the measure against which future appraised values are, um, compared and increment is calculated based on. And so if we stayed with the original district boundaries and the original appraised value at that time and backed out the Lee building and backed out the KU Med Center and backed out the Field House, our base value is actually going backwards. And it would be necessary for development to regain that and then exceed that base before increment was actually generated for the benefit of the, the downtown, um, uh, tax increment financing district. So there was some discussion, uh, among staff and Slayna twenty twenty and our bond council about whether there was, whether it would be appropriate, whether there was a way to remove those properties from the base, uh, appraised value. And by statute, that is permissible, but it requires that fifteen percent or more of the land area be reduced. Uh, there's a threshold there at which point you can, um, recalculate your, your base appraised value. And so fifteen percent was the threshold. With that in mind, we reviewed the, the district and the boundaries and looked at properties essentially on the perimeter of the, of the district. And we identified, um, eight of them for, that made sense to remove, the Lee buildings being one of them, the Field House property being another, uh, the KU School of Medicine and the Fifth Street parking lots behind it, between it and the Field House, um, the ADM Mill and General Services. General Services also is not subject to property taxes and it seemed unlikely that the ADM Mill would make some significant redevelopment. The Seventh Street Parking Lot, which currently isn't subject to parking, uh, subject to property taxes. The Public Parking Lot adjoining the Clark Lot and Mizlinville property, kind of surrounding it, is another property not subject to property taxes. Uh, the Ironman Eighth Street Public Parking Lot and then the Public Parking Lot adjoining the city. And so while that, uh, works its way around the perimeter, it, it does create a very irregular district compared to where it started. But, uh, that was probably the most effective way to, uh, identify fifteen percent of the area to be removed. In fact, it totaled sixteen point three seven percent. Um, in terms of conformance with the strategic plan, I think you've heard me say this many times, but there's a downtown emphasis. There's an emphasis on making the communities thrive, exciting and thriving, both economically and socially. And there's, uh, a- identified encouragement of downtown redevelopment. In terms of the fiscal note, there's no direct fiscal impact associated with this action other than to maximize the, the increment that will be captured as part of the tax increment financing, uh, district if it were enacted. And so we've identified for you three options for your consideration. One would be approving ordinance sixteen dash ten, eight, forty-three, which would remove certain real property from the downtown redevelopment district. The third, the second would be to postpone the consideration of the ordinance and provide guidance to staff regarding any additional information or revisions you would, uh, like for further consideration. And your third option is to choose not to approve ordinance sixteen, ten, eight, forty-three, which would leave the district unamended and would not remove the properties. One other thing that I would note is between the time of distributing the maps and, and today, the city surveyor, uh, reviewed them. They were prepared by outside parties and the city surveyor reviewed them and noted that on exception number, um, four, he just wanted to clarify that that's the ADM Property and General Services. There was a clarification that the Ash Street right-of-way would also be removed as part of that. There was a little confusion in, in terms of the mapping and the legal description. So I wanted to call that to your attention, that that change was made between the time the packet was distributed to you and today. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Is the, is the Lee building the only property on there that would be any sort of property tax generator?
Uh, yes.
Under the current plan?
I guess the other one would be the potentially the ADM Mill. And it, this doesn't exempt them from property taxes, it just leaves them out of the district. But, you know, the, the assessment we made there is, what's the likelihood that the ADM Mill will be redeveloped? And the past track record has led us to believe that it's probably not likely. It, it would have been an island between the Field House and the General Services campus, so it seemed to make sense to remove.
And the assumption is that the Lee building will be separate TIF at some point?
At least, it leaves that option open for them, right.
It's just out there.
In terms of redeveloping those buildings, I think we've talked to four, maybe five developers, and that is certainly one of the, the tools in the toolbox that they reach for first.
Is that most likely an NRA?
Well, that, that's another good question, but, um, it is in the NRA currently. And, um, there, there is a little bit more flexibility with the NRA program and tax increment financing in terms of how it can be used. So that's another possibility.
And the third possibility would be a real housing improvement district. So there, there are really three different tools that potentially could be used that deal with property taxes and, and tell, and tell we're close enough that there was a, a real development, uh, prospect there with a development plan. It's hard to tell, they don't know what the best approach would be, but as Mike mentioned, don't believe that leaving it in the, uh, current, uh, TIF district makes sense at this time.
Just one, are there any, uh, potential negatives to removing these properties?
The only potential negative is the boundaries no longer are identical to the star bond district and it's just a little bit, uh, more difficult to track possibly. And, you know, that, uh, the, the boundaries were a little bit cleaner previously. Now they're pretty jagged for the tax increment financing district, but that's not a reason not to do it.
It all is still contiguous?
Yes.
And is that a part of the requirement?
Um, yeah, they, they don't like island, um, the development of a TIF district. You can, uh, by additional action on your part, use TIF funds for road rights away outside of the, the TIF district. That's one of the things that we talked about is if there was some type of, uh, adjoining development or something on the edges of the district, that would still leave you the opportunity for, um, street improvements.
I don't think we had an overall map of the, the shape of that TIF, do we have? I'd kind of like to see what it looks like from this side.
I apologize.
We had that in the, we had that last time, didn't we?
Yeah, it, it, uh...
I'd just like to see how it reshaped with the parcels removed, but not important, just, uh, I don't know. Maybe it makes the shape of a wildcat or Jayhawk or something, something so maybe interested in.
But I, I can certainly get that to you. It's in the, in the tax increment financing plan and, uh, to be honest, I thought it was attached to, to your report, but I don't see it either.
All right, is there additional staff report? Anything from the public on this item? We'll bring it back here for a discussion. And gentlemen, is there a motion or further discussion on this item?
Yeah, move approval on first reading ordinance number sixteen dash one, zero, eight, four, three, removing certain real property from the downtown development district and making certain findings pursuant to KSA twelve dash one, seven, seven, zero, et cetera.
Second. Although, any further discussion then? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries four-oh. What are we ready for now? Seven, six, resolution number sixteen, seventy-three, seventy-eight, authorizing the mayor to execute a license agreement with Salina Regional Health Center to allow placement of two-inch interduct conduit to house multi-node fiber from northwest corner of Center Street and Kenwood Park Drive to five twenty-eight Kenwood Park Drive.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Yes, this is for Salina Regional Health Center. They have kind of a, a backbone, um, circ, or, um, loop fiber system that connects a lot of their facilities from the hospital to the comm care facility, to their Penn, um, technical, tech, or, um, computer technology area. They're on iron all the way down and around the park. And they have recently acquired the Cunningham Florist Building at five twenty-eight Kenwood Park Drive. And so they're wanting to connect that as well to their facilities. So this is just a short run of fiber line that would be in the right-of-way on the west side of Oakdale, Kenwood, the Kenwood, Oakdale area there. I guess from time to time, it's in the public interest to allow use of the right-of-way for different entities. We've listed a few there as examples. Let's see, there's different ki- types of license agreements, but this is pretty typical. And one that, um, Salina Regional has, um, used in the past and has worked with the city as well. Even sometimes when those facilities are in the right-of-way, they're, they're in the way of a project or something. And they've worked well with us in the past to, um, relocate those facilities or get them out of the way or make sure they're not in our way. So they've been a good neighbor in the right-of-way for those, um, facilities. So we would, um, ask that you adopt the resolution that allows this to occur. All right, entertain questions.
Questions for Mr. Stack? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any comments on this item from the public? And we'll bring it back to the commission for action. Is there a motion on this item, please?
Move that we adopt resolution number one, six, dash, seven, three, seven, eight, approving a license agreement with, uh, Salina Regional Health Center to allow for a two-inch interduct conduit to house multi-mode fiber from the corner of Center Street and Kenwood Drive to five twenty-eight Kenwood Park Drive.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution sixteen, seventy-three, seventy-eight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes four-oh. Item seven point seven, a contract for pump station rehabilitation project number sixty-three, one, ten. Ms. Tasker? Welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, the city currently operates, uh, a total of fifty-nine wastewater pump stations. And our current maintenance program is to rehabilitate two, uh, pump stations per year. And you do the math, that's roughly thirty years to work our way through these, uh, sixty pump stations. In the past, we've grouped two pump stations together per year and had a project that ranged two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. This, uh, time, we, we chose to group six pump stations together with the hope of a larger project and being able to bring in additional contractors to bid on our project. Uh, in the past, we've had, um, two to four contractors that have bid on the projects, the two that bid this time and then two additional contractors. So that's kind of where we've stood in the past for contractors to bid. This, uh, project includes rehabilitating six wastewater pump stations. And, uh, basically, five of those six, uh, are well over fifty years old. And, uh, one station, number forty-eight, is thirty-three, been in service for thirty-three years. It's located in a low area and it's been flooded out a few times from high water. So this project basically changes the equipment, raises the pump station above the high water elevation to move away from that problem. And, uh, then there's three, uh, force main locations that we're doing some replacement on that are old cast iron pipe. And we've had a number of, uh, breaks on those. Uh, bids were received on June fourteenth from two contractors. Uh, the low bid was from Smokey Hill LLC in the amount of one million, four-hundred-and-twelve thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. Uh, the second bid was Walters and Morgan Construction Incorporated. Their bid was one million, four-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-ten dollars. Our engineer's estimate was one million and fifty thousand dollars. Both, uh, Smokey Hill and Walters and Morgan have, uh, completed this kind of work for the city on previous pump station projects, have a pretty good understanding of what it takes to do the repair work on these type of stations. And just for a history note, uh, Smith and Lovelace is the type of pump station we're working on here. And the city of Salina has the three first Smith and Lovelace pump stations that were manufactured out of their factory in Lenexa, Kansas, and they're still in operation. So these stations, we've got many, many years of service out of and with this rehab work intend to get several years down the road. I provided you a lot of information where I tried to compare the costs and work my way through it. And, uh, basically what I found is the contractor's bid difference for the, uh, pu- six pump stations, um, was roughly, uh, less than five percent. The total bid was, uh, six percent difference. And in my thinking from that, that's relatively close for these type of bids in this amount. And so each contractor was looking at the scope of work and evidently our plans and specs helped them understand what we needed to do. So then I broke it down, looking at the engineer's estimate in Smokey Hill. And, uh, that basically left us with about a two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollar difference. So the next step was I talked with staff to determine, you know, where did our estimates come from? They were looking back at the twenty-twelve and twenty-thirteen projects. So next step was to review those projects and compare them to what did we have in this project? And basically what we determined was, um, we added new electrical services and emergency connection for a generator and arc flash modifications, which basically separates the low voltage and high voltage in the control panels, which makes it much safer for our staff. And then we have a city, uh, kind of standard for the impeller, that's a special impeller, that's non-clog and valves. And, uh, those items, uh, based on a detailed review of the costs, were roughly two-hundred-and-twenty thousand. That took us to about fifty, left us with about fifty-three thousand difference from the bids and the engineer's estimate. And, uh, further discussion with the contractor indicated that incrementally, some of the components were just higher. Labor costs have increased considerably over the past five years. And their description was they went roughly from twelve dollars an hour to fifteen, sixteen dollars an hour for their labors, which is pretty similar with what we've seen in my department for, um, our raises that we put in place to be able to hire employees. And, uh, based on the comparison of these two bids and the review of our engineer's estimate, staff just doesn't believe rebidding the project would provide a lot of value for us and recommend, uh, moving forward with Smokey Hill LLC. Kind of in a nutshell, um, our engineer's estimate was lacking. Can't, can't say it any other word, way. We didn't put enough effort into looking at these new items that we added. Spent too much emphasis on the old bids and that came back to haunt us. So that's kind of the short and long story of it. And, uh, our budget allocation was one million and fifty thousand dollars. And, uh, it's included in the two thousand and sixteen capital improvement program under the category of system enhancements. And again, these budgets were looked back and looked at the detailed estimates from the two tw- two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen work. Staff's proposing the addition of a five percent construction contingency, which would increase the authorized amount to one million, four-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand. If approved, this cost overage of four-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars, which would include the five percent construction contingency, uh, would be funded from the Water and Wastewater Capital Improvement Reserve Fund, which has a balance of roughly ten million dollars. Staff has identified, uh, three options for the city commission to consider. Uh, with the first is award the contract for the pump station rehabilitation project number sixty-three, one, ten to Smokey Hill LLC of Salina, Kansas, in the amount of one million, four-hundred-and-twelve thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and with the, uh, five percent construction contingency of one million, four-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand. Deny the contract for the pump station rehabilitation project number sixty-three, ten. And the third is to instruct staff, uh, regarding amending the proposed contract. Uh, staff recommends option one. I'd, uh, be glad to answer any questions you might have at this time.
The two, three very old pumps, that sound like they're ready for donation to a museum, but these are being rehabilitated and not replaced.
They're being rehabilitated. These have a, uh, steel structure that the pumps are in, installed in. We call it a can-type pump station, has an interest in that entrance and then a large can shape or circular shape with the pump station. So the equipment's being replaced and then the, um, there's an area in the floor that's rusted. We'll cut that out, weld in a new steel plate and put, install corrosion protection on the pump station. It is what we've done on, uh, about four to five pump stations previously. So not throwing it away, we're rehabilitating it and plan to continue getting long life out of this piece of equipment.
Sounds like you have already.
Yeah, we, uh, uh, Smith and Lovelace touts Salina for its maintenance and care, considering we have those three, first three pump stations. We do put a lot of pride in taking care of what we have.
Other questions?
Other questions?
Um, did, concerning your estimate, did you say that the estimate would include increased labor cost or not when determining the cost of the?
They, in a nutshell, they looked at the, or we, I should say, I can't say they, they, we all work in the same department, looked back at the estimates from the previous four stations that were done, and used those numbers to put their estimate together, and did not look hard enough at the individual work that we've added. Felt that the larger project and that would bring the cost of the project down, and that did turn, did not turn out to be the case.
So the last time we did any of these projects where we did two in 2012 and we did two in 2013?
Yes.
And we haven't done any since?
No, we're, this is our next round of two plus two plus two, takes us to these six stations. The 2012 project was completed by Smokey Hill, it bid right at the end of 2011 and was constructed in 2012. And the 2013 project was Walters and Morgan, so that's kind of the date back to these stations. And those projects were roughly, one was $200,000 and the other, I think, was $183,000. So on our budgeting process, those are the numbers we used, and we believe that bringing in a larger project would pull in more contractors and better pricing and...
It did.
We didn't pull in, we didn't pull in more contractors, and we sure didn't pull in better pricing, but we also added some additional work to the project and, and didn't include, didn't look at that hard enough and evaluate it well enough.
That didn't, the size of the project didn't scare anybody away? I mean, that's not your...
No, no, typically, they like to, if you're going to pull in a contractor from another community, they'd like to have a little larger project, so when they move in, they're here for a duration, don't have to mobilize, can mobilize and do multiple projects for. So the intention in the past...
Was the timing about the same? I mean, we let the project out at the same time, or the contract, I mean, the bid, solicit the bids about the same time of year and...
Yes, one was in December, one, I think, was July. Let me look. So, you know, timing, and we allowed a year for the construction project, and both contractors thought that time was ample, so they felt they could do that. One, bids were tabulated in December of 2011, and the other was July 16th of 2013, so a December and a July bid from previous time, so nearly identical to the 2013 project. And then typically with these type of pump stations, it would take three to six months to start receiving some of the equipment. The delivery time for the pumps is fairly, fairly lengthy, so get the project bid, some of the, get the work, get the shop drawings, get the materials here, and then be ready to start the projects next year.
Are these, are these three force main replacements, are they all, are they all a complete replacement of that section of force main, or is it just sections of?
The station, station number 44 is from the pump station, and it's over along Interstate 35, and it's basically from the pump station underneath the interstate and then to a point along the east side, and that's basically where the old cast iron pipe seems to have some pockets in it and is trapped air, and the hydrogen sulfide has created breaks or leaks in the pipeline, so that one's...
So they're all, they all tie into force main?
Yes.
They're all, so they're all section of force main?
Pump station 38 is a complete replacement of the force main. It starts out on Marymount, pump station's in the backyard of a home. We had a break at Thanksgiving, I think, a year, a year and a half ago, and so we've had, we tracked the number of breaks, that's a complete replacement, and pump station 20 is a short piece of line, but that's a replacement of that force main over along Glen Avenue, so 44 is really the only one that's a short portion of it. The other two, one's fairly long, one's just a short piece of force main, but it is the entire length of the force main.
Right. All right. Well, just as a note, I appreciate the updated map on the water main replacements, and this question kind of goes along with that. I'm not asking for a map, but just to put into perspective, out of the roughly 60 wastewater pump stations that we have, this, this represents about 10 percent of that system. When did we start and how many have we done over, like, where are we in the process of re?
We're about, I'm going to say, about, we've been through about 20 pump stations. Some of them are submersible pump stations, and you've seen...
Right.
Submersible pumps come through on a regular basis. They seem to take more maintenance, those type of pumps, than what we do here, but we've done about 20 to 22 of our pump stations.
Okay.
Some stations, stations A, B, and C are the ones that are, look like a home or a building. They're larger stations. We've replaced pumps there, we've done work on those. A couple of the other submersible stations we've worked at, but this main effort is trying to bring up our old Smith &amp; Lovelace pump stations to get those.
Okay, so the 22 submersible and the 37 dry pit type, these six are the which variety?
They're the dry pit type. They're either a wet well with the pump setting on top, or they're the can type that pull water out of the manhole, so, but they're basically wet well type stations.
We've got quite a significant investment in, in pump stations.
That we do. Pump stations and piping and it's a, a lot of work, and we, we try to track main break, or force main breaks and hours on pumps, and we're working on a new asset management program that does a lot better job at managing these items and keeping a better track of it. In the past, it's been more of a memory and the effort of where we're having problems, so now we're trying to go more electronic and track it better, so I hope we'll have better results in the future, but...
Better Thanksgiving days for...
That was not a good day for the property owner or many of the staff and all the individuals we had to pull in to work on that, so...
Well, I guess it's what they, it's true what they say, it's a very high-volume day, Thanksgiving, so...
It was.
Yeah.
It was the night before, but it lingered on.
All right.
Any more questions for?
I think I should be leaving. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any comment from the public on this item? Back here for discussion, is there more discussion or a motion on this item?
Well, I think that these, I, I think that although the estimate is considerably higher than the engineer's estimate, I think that just the two, I'm comfortable with the two in the, in the sense that they're, it was competitively bid and it, and they are comparable bids. So if it were one bid, I might have a little heartburn, but I don't have a problem with the way these are, accepting these bids.
Is there a second?
So if I can't...
Or did you?
Yeah.
I thought all of that. I'll say that comment.
So that would be in the form of accepting the, and awarding the rehabilitation project number 63110.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item carries 4-0. There's no development business, there's other business. Is there anything else to come before the commission, before we hear this request for an executive session?
Vice Mayor, if none of the other commissioners had any other business, I had one quick favor to ask if I could.
Sure.
The, you will recall authorizing a contract for the acquisition of 301 North 10th Street a short time ago. That closing is set for this Friday, July 15. We don't anticipate any problems, but we are coming up close enough to that date and have not yet had an opportunity to review the title commitment or the closing statement. This being your last meeting prior to that scheduled closing, if you would see fit to add this to your agenda this evening, the, the request would be to authorize the city manager to sign an addendum to reasonably extend that closing date if necessary. It may very well not be necessary, but at this point in time, I don't know for sure, and this is the last time you meet before the 15th, so the motion would just be along the line of authorizing the city manager to sign an addendum to the contract for the city's purchase of 301 North 10th Street for a reasonable extension of the closing date if that becomes necessary.
Your permission to make that movement?
Greg, real quick, do you want to have them take the action to actually add that topic to the agenda first?
Technically, we should do that first and then follow by...
Add it to the agenda first?
Right.
Is there, is there motion to add the item to the agenda?
Yeah, I would move that we add item 7.8.
Are we putting this under development business, or?
I think it's fine under other business if that's all right.
9.1, 9 point, add 9.1. Yeah, to authorize the city manager to sign an addendum to the real estate contract to extend closing date at the property listed at 301 North 10th.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes, we have it on the agenda, so let's discuss it. Is there a date you're recommending that we move this to?
I spoke in terms of a reasonable date, if that's all right. As I say, I, you know, I don't know, no more than 30 days possibly, if that works for you all.
I would, I would move authorization to the city manager to sign an addendum to extend to a reasonable date, the closing date for the property located at 301 North 10th Street.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that passes 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a request for executive session for legal. Will we be coming back for any further business?
No, we don't expect you to come back for any vote or formal business.
Well, then, we could hear this motion unless someone has a, anyone has any additional comments before we go.
Estimate of time.
15 minutes.
Times two.
Mr. Vice Mayor, move to recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene at 5:20 PM.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in executive session.